Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Rainham Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. This is a meeting of continuation of our Tuesday evening meeting.
So, the process tonight is supposed to be that what had occurred previously was supposed to take place again now. And that is, Mr. Andrade came in and he should address the board as he did previously and discuss what he discussed previously on that evening in March. I don't know if Mr. Iafredi added anything to the meeting at all, but if you could get up and address the board as you did previously, that would be great. Thank you.
Do I walk back in, just like I did?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, great, we're all three here. Can I just get five minutes before you get on TV?
Sure, go right ahead, sit down.
You don't say anything? We have a public hearing for Route 138, Overlake District, next Thursday. I hope all three of you show up, and then I'll update my brochures and everything's been going good over there. And so, thank you. You can keep going.
Okay. I guess you might want to ask if anybody has any input, wants to say anything as part of the meeting?
As part of the meeting on the Article 24, does anyone here wish to say anything?
I'm confused by Article 24.
Madam Chair, if you'll let me.
Go ahead.
Do I counsel?
Let me explain it rather than you. Okay, so, am I, let me do this. Maybe if I just.
I called the Attorney General's office because it had brought to my attention that there had maybe been an issue with regards to a hearing being held that hadn't been posted. So, what the Attorney General's office asked me to do was to have the town post this past Tuesday, which they did, that there was going to be a hearing with regards to the Section 24, Article 24, which is what was discussed, from what I understand. I wasn't here, so I don't know. My belief upon information that I received is that's basically all that was discussed the night that he came in, that he had to come in and basically reclaimate what had occurred to solve the problem with the open meeting. So, in furtherance of that, at this point in time, based upon what he said, my understanding, what he had said to the board on that night, he walked in and announced, and he announced the other night, that basically it was all on him because he walked in and just approached the board because he saw they were all here, and in a quote-unquote "informal" way attempted to explain to them what was going on with the Overlake District. He just did that now. So, in order to cure the issue with regards to a potential violation of the open meeting law, it has to be discussed openly. It was discussed openly just now. So, if anybody has any input or wants to discuss anything having to do with the Overlake District or Article 24 with the chairman, they can do that now.
Yes, ma'am. I'm Sylvia Cross from Chikering Road. I was present at that meeting. When it was first brought up, they...
Go to the microphone, dear, please, because we, they can't hear you.
I know, I have to do that tonight.
Are you asking me a question or a job?
No, I'm asking them.
Okay, sit down.
Or I'm saying what my impression that evening. Sylvia Cross, Chikering Road. That evening, when it was brought up that this had occurred, two of the select people, Mrs. Smith and Mr. Pacheco, didn't seem to know what we were talking, what was being asked. They didn't really remember the conversation or anything that it even took place. And then finally, Mr. Pacheco said that he did remember that there had been a conversation, but he didn't really remember exactly what took place. And so, I'm confused with that little play-acting that just took place. It seemed kind of, it seemed unbelievable to me. And so, I really have a question as to what really took place that evening when the two of you seemed to not even remember it, when it was brought up at the last meeting at first.
So, I'll answer that two ways, ma'am. The first is, I had no idea what was being referenced because I wasn't aware of any prior statements relative to that subject. So, that was the first part of my confusion, and I can't speak to Mrs. Smith or Ms. Riley, who wasn't on the board at the time.
That's right.
And I was open about that. I said, "I'm not sure what you're talking about. I don't know who you're referencing," having had made those comments. And then the gentleman who was speaking gave us some more insight, and as you said, I did acknowledge that that happened. After that meeting, I can again speak to my colleagues, but I called Town Council, and I said, "We need to look into this to see if there's any accuracy to it." And what Town Council just explained is what happened, and the Attorney General's office advised us to do what you just saw. And the extent of Mr. Andrade's comments tonight are the extent of his comments that night. Present that evening was myself, Mrs. Smith, Ms. Donahue, the former selectman, Mr. Flaherty, our acting town administrator, and our building commissioner and planning coordinator, Mr. Iafredi. The rest of the conversation we had was about Mr. Andrade's vacation he had just returned from in Mexico. It was a casual conversation. It was an oversight. It shouldn't have happened. When I was made aware of it that evening, I called Council, and this is what transpired as a result of that. There was no effort or motive or malice to do anything other than the right thing. And the moment it was brought up, I made a phone call.
Okay.
So...
All right, if you say so.
John Textero, 122 First Street. The only question...
Please.
All right.
I know your voice is loud, but they can't hear it over the cable.
I just connected to the mic. I know. John Textero, 122 First Street. The only question is what you said, Joe, that there was one more person at that meeting? Me?
I'm sorry, absolutely.
He was here, he was here at the back of the room. I remember being there.
What's that?
That's why, we didn't think anything of it. Lorraine, please.
Well, before, we're done with that part of the meeting now?
What do you mean, we're done with that part?
I mean about addressing that meeting thing.
Well, if no one else has any questions, then I would put it to bed. No one has any other questions?
No, but if she has something to say about Article 24, it's germane to the subject itself, so...
It's all good.
Yeah, I just didn't want to interrupt the floor.
Yeah, that's all right, go right ahead.
I didn't want to interrupt the floor, yeah. Kay Lorraine Nickerson, First Street, Rainham. I just have a couple of things to say. I'm so sick of talking about Article 24. I'm so sick of Article 24 being part of my life. So, anyway, here I go. Bear with me. I just want to know if what I brought up at the, I've been to so many meetings, pre-Town Meeting, about that February 10th bylaw, if that's being addressed by anyone.
I can answer that question. That date, February 10th, was when we held our town meetings in March. Years ago, we had our town meetings in March. Town meeting date was changed to May. Evidently, it was an oversight on our part that we never amended the bylaw to take out November 10 and put in what it is.
Our February 10th.
Our February 10th, I'm sorry.
But, still, it's a bylaw. I'm just going, I want to go on the record that it's a bylaw today, February 10th.
We understand that.
All right, so I just want to put that on the record, that February 10th is in the bylaw. And that also no, the selectman didn't also send the clerk of the advisory to the Finance Committee by February 10 either. Because that's in the bylaw also. I'm just...
I didn't know what you said.
I'm just reiterating what's in the bylaw, that the selectman didn't send to the clerk of advisory to the Finance Committee by February 10 either. I just want, I just...
You said what?
I don't under...
The articles.
Concerning what?
Were you talking about the same article?
Yes, the same thing, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you...
Yes, yes, it's all part of that one article. I just want to go on the record for that.
Thank you, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, and I just want to let you know, because of this, I do intend to follow up with the municipal law department with the Attorney General. And number two, I'm also still concerned of, to me, it seems like there's no opinion about how Article 24 was submitted to begin with, on behalf of the Planning Board, on Planning Board letterhead, on April 2nd, which, you know, and when they hadn't seen it, no other Planning Board member had seen it till April 17th for the open meeting of April 19th. And, I mean, we have a five-member planning, voting, planning board. So, I just, I'm boggled that everybody's okay with that, I guess. Number three, this, I would like to, now, I'm under the impression, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you, not you, Pat, because you weren't involved in this before, but that you're, you sponsor this article or support it or whatever word we like to, I'm not asking how you're voting, but you support it, you sponsor it, et cetera. Am I correct in saying that?
Well, if you listen to Mr. Andrade, he gave you the particulars of when we actually did support that, which was all the way back down to when Marilyn was the town planner. So, in essence, yes, we did support it.
Okay, but I'm just saying, in this particular article, the finality of this article, because when Marilyn was here, that was a basis for us to go forth and still work on.
Yeah, but that followed all the way through to every other town planner.
Okay, well, okay, so I just, I just want to get the general consensus of what your, you know, your opinion is, I guess. But what I'm saying is, because if you do feel that way, and you are asking, you know, me to give up or sacrifice the equity in my home, to me, it's just to contribute to the wealth of developers. Because I cannot see, I know when there is something better for the masses, that sometimes there has to be collateral damage. I get that. But, what is coming to Rainham with this article that is so wonderful for this town that we are being asked to give up the equity in our homes? Because I just don't, I don't understand what it is. Because, and please, 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 do not tell me it's for our fire and our police and our schools and our budget and our tax revenue, because that is not correct. Because when Market Basket got their occupancy permit, that was a $7 million valuation, and our taxes don't end up after that. So, if a $7 million property, $7 million property doesn't help our tax revenue, what is going here that's going to be worth more than $7 million? And how can you be behind this article? I don't understand that. I just have to say, and yes, I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, I'm very upset about this. And I'll close with this, I just want to say that at the pre-Town Meeting, it was, a comment was made that I felt pressured by my neighbors, and that's why I abstained from voting on the article. Well, I want to just say one more time, when this committee was formed, we met in September, five people, including the planner. That first meeting, someone asked for a pen, didn't have one. One of the members took the pen out, threw it across the table, tossed it across the table, whatever word you want to use, and said, "Here, take mine, I won't be writing anything down." And like I said at pre-Town, I said, "Oh, here we go, this is going to be a farce." Second meeting with three people, myself, Billy Lewis, and Dan. That was it. We never met in November, we never met in December, we never met in January, we never met in February, we met March 27th in the 11th hour, because we had to get this article rushed through, and they asked to take a vote that night. Well, how could I vote? Because I vote on behalf of everybody that's here, not just for me, Lorraine Nickerson. I vote for all these people. How can I make a vote that night if I can't even take this information back to these people? So, that's why I abstained. And it wasn't because of the, that I said I was pressured by my neighbors. I want that corrected. I was, I felt I was, the pressure of the responsibility, that I was responsible for my neighbors, not because I felt pressured by my neighbors. My neighbors had never made me feel pressured, ever, and I just want to go on the record and say that. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments they wish to make at this time?
Yeah, I...
Please, sir, state your name.
My name is John O'Brien, I live on 425 King Philip Street. I've lived here all my life, and I really can't believe that you would support doing that to 138. You know, this was a farm community when I grew up. I got animals in my backyard, and it's going to affect me, just like the neighbors that are here. You know, coming out of First Street the way it is now, it is terrible. And what, you know, Danny Andrade got up and did his little thing. What he's done to 138, what are you going to do to the rest of 138? You sit at my house, you're welcome to come to my house. Joe, you've been to my house, and I know, Pat, you lived in town all your life. Maria, I don't know where you really started out, but I mean, this has really got to the point where it's ridiculous. And you're taking 138, and you're going to do like 44? I mean, you're going to, you're going to make a big mistake if this ever happens. It's terrible the way it is. The farm community that used to be here is going to be ruined. I think it's a disaster what you're going to do to Rainham. No wonder why the old people have moved out and, you're going, this is going to be a business community, that's all you're going to have. And I really, and then I found out that ain't in your article, that possibly you're going to take my house and bulldoze it over and put a access road over to First Street to alleviate traffic off of 138. Nobody heard that, right? Well, I did hear it, and some of the people that sit back here.
They listened, yes.
It wasn't in your article, but I hear it from other people, they're going to take my house out of there and bring a road out. Well, how do we like that to live?
Well, just so there's no confusion, sir, they have to take that by eminent domain, and I can tell you specifically, nobody on this board has asked me to start any type of action for eminent domain to take that home.
Well, I've heard it two or three times.
I'm telling you flat...
And I wasn't at the last meeting, but I heard it two or three times.
I'm telling you, flat out, on the record, on TV, there is no action for eminent domain that is intended by this board at this point in time.
Was you at the last, was you at the last meeting?
I've been at every meeting.
Well, it was at the last meeting.
And I'm telling you, before they can take your house, they have to come to see me, and nobody has done that. So, whoever sent that to you is telling you the wrong thing, I'm telling you right now. Let him finish, and then let...
Well, I'm just saying, I've lived here all my life, I love living in Rainham, I didn't move, I raised my two children there, and believe me, you're making a big mistake endorsing that. And what are you doing to the police and fire? You're only going to create more school systems. I just wish you, you'd think about this before you do it. And I hope more people get involved in this when this thing comes up, if you approve this to go to that article. I heard that you guys didn't approve it, that's why I'm here tonight. I heard that it wasn't approved by you people.
I don't know where he's getting the information.
If I could, Mr. O'Brien, first of all, I've never heard anybody taking your house. It certainly didn't come from me or my colleagues. I literally, no clue where that came from.
Okay, go ahead.
So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, I think it's important to put this in context. Don McKinnon taught me this when I first became a selectman. He said, "Regardless of if you support an article or not, you should be willing to put it on a town meeting warrant so people have a voice in democracy to let them decide." All this board has done is put an article on a warrant to allow you and your neighbors to vote on it. This board has not endorsed it, this board did not author it. This board took an article that was submitted to it, approved its placement on the town meeting warrant, and now it goes to town meeting that every Rainham resident, 18 and older, registered to vote in town, can speak on and vote on.
The way I understood it was, you guys had to approve it to go on that warrant.
We do, absolutely.
But I heard you didn't.
No, we did. And so, there's some information you're getting, I apologize, but it's incorrect. I have never once voted down an article to appear on a town meeting warrant, but what I have done is vote to put something on a town meeting warrant and then not supported at town meeting, because it's the separate branches of government.
Well, I just hope you work in for the people of Rainham. Think about what's going on over there in North Rainham, and what it's going to do to the rest of the town.
Absolutely.
And hopefully, you're going to think the way that us people in this room do.
Absolutely, but I just want to make sure you're aware of what has happened, what has not happened.
Well, I do now.
What is truthful and what is not, because there's an awful lot of rumors going around that are disrespectful, disingenuous, and have no place in the town of Rainham.
You know, I talked to your father a couple of weeks ago about the traffic situation. He already knew about the traffic, and I'd welcome any one of yous to please come and sit in my yard someday, just to see the traffic volume right now. And I could not imagine something happened, what you guys, what they presented, if that ever goes through. Because I'm done. I mean, there's no way that I'd be able to live there. I might as well sit in the middle of 138. But I thank you for listening to me, and I hope that, heaven forbid, that does not go through.
Thank you for your comments.
John Textero, 122 First Street. Just to clear up the comment about the going through his yard and so forth, at the, at the public hearing, someone made the comment about how bad the traffic is to get out of First Street and so forth. And Dan Andrade, in jest, okay, is a Bob to me, said that, "Well, we could always take John's house down and go all the way out to King Philip Street." Now, the O'Briens happen to live directly behind me, so if you took my house down to go out to King Philip Street, you obviously would take their house down as well. Unfortunately, that, and I'm not just pointing this at you, but unfortunately, a number of people have come to me with that, saying that they were concerned that they were going to, someone was going to take my house down to put a road through there.
Well, I just want to reiterate, and I appreciate you clarifying, Mr. Taxero, that this did not come from that board.
No, not, it was, it was just, like I said, it was a dig to me, towards me, that's all it was, because obviously Dan was, excuse me?
It was at the Planning Board, yep.
Yeah, was it the public hearing at the Planning Board? It was a dig towards me?
I'm not disputing something was said.
I just, I just want to put it to bed, because...
Yeah, and I appreciate that. What I'm, again, trying to clarify is, it did not come from this board, and I was not aware of that comment.
No.
That's what I want to clarify, because you're addressing us tonight, we're not the Planning Board. I don't speak for the Planning Board, they're independently elected. This board did not say that, and this board until, well, I shouldn't say this board, myself, until you just all said this, I was not aware of it, I was not at that hearing.
That's where it came from. Like I said, it was just to give me a little dig, because he wasn't happy with what I had read in my public statement, that's all. There's no truth to that. I'm not moving so that they can tell you they're on my house, my wife won't let me move. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, you understand how that cut back to me?
Oh, absolutely.
And that was a big concern to me and my wife, and that was one of the reasons why I came in, just so I, you understand.
And, no, and I appreciate you asking and seeking clarification, because the worst thing that happens is these rumors get out, which are completely baseless and unfounded. And then people come in with hard feelings and think all this stuff is going on. So, I hope you leave here tonight feeling a little bit more relieved, Mr. O'Brien, because...
I do, yeah.
There was a comment that was made that night at the Planning Board meeting, and if it was broadcast on the community channel, it could have gone from that.
I have no idea what you're talking about. No, Lorraine, please.
Lorraine Nickerson, First Street. I do have one other thing to say, and I guess I'm more directing that to you, Mr. Peatnik. I just don't know how it can even be possible for a man who is, serves on the Planning Board, introduces an article before the rest of the Planning Board has seen it, stamped April 2nd, when it involves property on 138 that belongs to a, like a business partner of his in other areas of this town, on Rainham Planning Board letterhead. I just don't understand how that can be kosher, whatever your word, ethical, whatever you...
Conflict of interest.
I mean, how can that not be a conflict of interest? And they are, they are partners because they went before the Planning Board for their property on 44, the 55 and over that they're doing. So, they, their lawyer, their lawyer that represented them that night, said that they were partners together on their Route 44, 55 and over. So, how can this one person of the Planning Board submit an article which will benefit a business partner of his on his own on Rainham Letterhead Planning Board without the Planning, I just, without the other members seeing it? I just do not understand it. I don't understand it. And how everybody is okay with this and going to this meeting on May 21st, which is going to affect all our lives and all the equity in our homes, and please don't even tell me that it's not going to affect our equity, because we are no longer going to be zoning residential A. So, a residential A value is certainly not going to be the same as when your house is in a business zone. And I just can't believe that we have so many, you know, intelligent people in Rainham, and nobody can see that this is, there's not something good here. I just, I'm just baffled. Thank you.
Good evening, Carolyn Carson, Chikering Road. I've lived in Rainham since 1990 on Chikering Road, and it just baffles me that this article was even put forth, and the way it's pushed through, and what Lorraine said and other people have said, affecting our home values. It's just not fair. We bought our homes in a residential A, expecting to live our lives there. My husband and I want to retire there. We're raising our 14-year-old son there, and this is all being taken away from us, and it really is due to greed, wanting to rezone all of that land and put in these businesses. What are we going to be around? Jiffy Lubes, Taco Bells, 24-hour gas stations? It's not right. And this is the third time it's come up, and we've voted against it now twice. And I just hope that people will come together and realize, this isn't right for Rainham. It's going to destroy the fabric of my neighborhood and 138. Coming here this evening, there was a huge accident on King Philip. A tractor-trailer truck hit a car, and then another car backed into that car. The road now can't even handle the traffic. I mean, we sit, we drive out onto First Street, and we can't take a left. Sometimes I have to take a right just to go down and turn around to take a left. And by building there, and then by having all these beautiful residential homes destroyed, and it's just for greed, and the way it keeps on getting pushed through secretly. And I also heard that the ballot of that night is going to be a secret ballot, that a written ballot, is that also true?
It's up to the moderator, not us.
We don't run town meeting, Ms. Carson, it's the town moderator, and there's three, and Moderator Donahue on Tuesday night explained the three voting options, is the voice vote, there's the hand vote, which is with whatever color card the clerk picks, and then at the moderator's discretion, you can do a...
Paper ballot.
Thank you, Ms. Metzger.
And that should be a flag right there. Why does it have to be a secret vote? What's being hidden?
Is there a discussion on that?
I would, Moderator Donahue is a very transparent, good public servant, and I would have every expectation that he would allow discussion on it. He's a good guy, and he means well, and I have the utmost respect for him, and I would believe if that was asked for, that he would allow a discussion on it. But the board, once we vote on the town meeting warrant, we don't have anything else to do with it. Then it becomes town meeting, and the town moderator runs that meeting. We don't run it.
And also, because this article directly affects us in being a butters, we should have been notified on town letterhead what was going on. I never received anything on it. And that's not fair. You know, and it's, you know, our neighborhood is a mix of young families that have moved into the neighborhood, elderly people, people, middle-aged people, families. Our children can play out on the road, we have lots of children in our neighborhood, because our neighborhood is quiet, it doesn't get a lot of traffic. But, if this article is, goes through, it will totally change our neighborhood. Our neighborhood will become like a racetrack, people driving in and around it. And that's not right. We bought our homes in a quiet neighborhood, expecting it to remain residential A. So, I'm asking you, in all good faith, to oppose it, stand up publicly and oppose it. You wouldn't want it in your neighborhood, and I certainly don't want it in mine. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith, if I could just... I think, if I could, Mrs. Carson, I would just encourage anybody, if you feel opposed to it, just be sure you go to the town meeting, because it is a town meeting vote, the people there, and I believe it's a two-thirds vote. It's not just a simple majority, it takes two-thirds people in favor for it to get approved. And the selectmen, we're there, we have three votes, we each one vote as you have a vote. We don't have any more authority than that, it's up to the voters. So, if you're opposed to it, please just be sure that you don't go to the meeting.
But I think also how, as our select people, as representatives of us of the town, for you to come out against that, it's not, it doesn't benefit anybody but the people that own that property. That's the people that benefit us. So, they shove more money into their pockets, have total disregard for our neighborhood, for our values, our values, or our home. It's just not right. And Mr. Andrade, I found him to be very insulting tonight, the way he did that little, you know, play-acting. Like, he's treating this as a joke. He's treating our lives, our home, my son's future, as a big joke. And I'm sure everyone in this room feels the exact same way. It was insulting.
I know I will make a statement that night, and obviously, anybody, any voter can as well.
Yes, ma'am. I know, I'm a pain in the neck, I made you go to the mic.
I can't, no, you're not here?
No, never say no.
Sylvia Cross, Chickering Road. I have a question, if there is a secret ballot, who counts the ballots?
That's up to the town clerk to make that decision, and the moderator.
Well, the moderator announced it on Tuesday. He said it would be himself and tellers from the town clerk's office. These questions were all gone over on Tuesday evening at the pre-town meeting.
Unfortunately, I did not make that...
No, that's fine, I'm just saying that...
Right.
They were given by the town moderator on Tuesday evening.
Right.
He said, if there were a secret ballot, that would be the process. So the same people who count the regular town election ballots.
And the other thing I want to say, I felt very uncomfortable the other day when I came up over First Street, and surveyors were already in our neighborhood surveying. And so I questioned the young man, who's, who hired you to survey? He said, the gentleman who owns the land up on the hill at a butts First Street and Chickering Road. And then he said, it's because he has to do all this surveying in order to take down the buildings he presently has on that land. But it really was hurtful to see that somebody was already in our neighborhood surveying.
Lorraine Nickerson, First Street, I just wanted to say, Mr. Peatnik, I really didn't get a reply from you before when I asked about the partnership, and the lone, the lone man submitting the article and such.
So if you understand my role, I represent the town, and you're asking me for an opinion to give to you, which you could conceivably use against the town? So, I'm not, I'm not, I can't answer those questions, A, because... I've said it right there. It, it doesn't, so I represent the town, so, and I have not had, even if I were in a position to try to answer it, I would have to research all of what you're saying.
That's my question to you, are you going to research it? That's my question. I'm not asking your opinion on it or anything like that, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you. I've given you this information, I've stated it, are you going to research it?
There are some things that you've asked me that I have already looked into.
Okay. Because the town is the people.
I understand that, but you also have to understand that I represent the town. I don't represent individual people in the town, and you're asking me an individual question.
No, I was, no, I was, well, forgive me if you misinterpreted my question. My question was, what are you going to do with the information that I've asked?
You didn't ask that question.
Well, that's what I'm asking you now. So you're going to research it?
I have already looked into some of it, but some of it I am clearly not going to look into, because it doesn't have to do with my position as representing the town.
Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Carolyn Carson, Chickering Road.
I just also wanted to add, in the past, we've been lied to. The Dunkin' Donuts that's presently beside the Market Basket was supposed to be a bank with a drive-in through a window, and then it turned into a big Dunkin' Donuts. And, so that's why when I read this article, I'm just, I feel like I'm being lied to all over again. You know, they're trying to, like, say that it would be a beautification project for Rainham, and kind of making it into a town square area. Let's get realistic, it's Route 138, it's a heavily-traveled state highway, it's not going to be like a Bridgewater Town Center, with little shops and homes above it. It will be, like, major businesses there, and that, that changes our neighborhood completely, and it's not right, and that's all I want to say about it. Thank you.
I feel as though you should be opposing this. If you look on 138, and only go a half a mile up the road, those homes have been there for many, many years. People have lived in them for many years, and are paying taxes to this town. There is no empty homes. The only empty home is the one on the top of the hill. Otherwise, all the homes that are residential A, there are families raising their families in those homes. They don't want their homes torn down, they don't want a Burger King next door. Would you like a Burger King all of a sudden come up the Forest Street way? Would you like it to come your way, or your way? You wouldn't want this stuff to be coming into your neighborhood, just because you have homes way out in the woods, where they're not going to be commercial, going to go out there. We live down, we accept the commercial that we have there now. We take, and there are plenty of commercial lots that are sitting from Taunton Line to 495. There are plenty of commercial lots. What has done with them? They're vacant. There's a car wash, a foundation thing. It's been sitting there almost all the time I've lived in this town. We used to have beautiful homes across from First Street. Somebody come in there, bought up the land, they changed the, the rules at that time. We thought we were getting something simple in there. And they say, oh, we're going to build these beautiful, they're stock buildings, there is nothing beautiful about them. We went to the planning board meeting, they showed, they put up on the wall, all these fancy, fancy, um, commercial buildings that are built in all other towns. Well, I can tell you, one of them that they showed, that they said, oh, look at this here, isn't this beautiful? Well, all they had to do was scan the camera over just a little bit. It's a bunch of mulch piles and logs, and everything. It's, it's not real nice-looking, and they're showing all these houses with, these commercial buildings with all this fancy work. Maybe one guy or something, he's, he's into, that's the way he builds. But that's not what it's going to be. We, we just got another auto parts store. They're stock buildings. They might have fresh paint on them today, but 10 years down the road, if they don't make it, guess what? That's it, that's going to look like a rundown building. And any of these other buildings, we have Market Basket, they can't fill them stores down there, they don't do nothing, they're empty. You're not making the tax dollars, you're making tax dollars off of all these families that live in all those homes on both sides of the road. And we live a little, maybe just a little bit deeper in, but you're making it harder for us. Kids are moving out of town because they don't want to put up with this crap, because they're saying, I ain't, I ain't dealing with this here, this traffic. 138 is terrible. I go, I travel at least twice a day, my wife travels it, my daughter travels it. Once we get over 495, it's a line of traffic all the way down to First Street. And we're not even hitting the Market Basket like. And it's, it's just, it's, it's ridiculous. And you as a board of selectmen should oppose it, for the residents that all of us, we've lived there, we have paid our taxes, we have paid our taxes time and time again. And granted, maybe the, the two that we always talk about pay their taxes too, but they're in here to make money. They're just trying to make money, and they're down the road. They don't live in the area, they don't have to put up with it. The only time they're going to put up with it is to come down, check, see if the surveyor's doing his business, and, and the builder is doing his thing. Once it's all said and done, they are down the road. They're down the road, mail the check to my office, and that's it. They ain't doing nothing for us. They come and smile, and shake your hand, and everything, but they're ready to kick us in the ass. And I just don't think it's fair, and I think it, it would be fair for you as a board to stand up, all three of you, stand, four of you, whatever it is, town clerk, you two, everybody, stand up and oppose it, and say, no, it's not happening here. Go up to your industrial park and play up there. Spend your money up there, do that. Don't come down and ruin our neighborhood. I don't think that it's fair at all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Name's Greg Essendorian from 28 Ann Street in Rainham. My personal, and I know the board's not here to listen to the pros and cons, you can't change it, you're going to have your own votes. I did come here to express my concern, and that's the traffic. I mean, it's just, it's disgraceful. You can't go from 495 down to be other end of Rainham on 138 without hitting major, big trucks all the time. We want to fix that up and make it look good for the town of Rainham. Stop addressing Central Oil, that, my understanding, I might be wrong, is, has tax debt going back for how long, and we don't do anything about it, getting them to clean that place up, make, make it look more trapped than it is now, I'm not, clean up the mess that it is now. We've got the trucks coming in out of lopes, it's unbelievable. So more businesses is just going to create more traffic. I know you're not really here, I understand that's, it's the planning board that those things should be addressed to, or whatever. But that's where I originally came from. But what I really want to say tonight, I've been a resident here since 1976. Great people like Don McKinnon, Mr. Carey, over in the past years. I've never seen anything as deceptive and as disgraceful as what's starting to happen now. On this issue, so far I've heard, we've got a possible conflict of interest issue, we got a vote, how it got on the warrant, no one knows, without all the planning board members approving it, or even knowing about it. Oh, there was another issue there. Oh, and now we're talking about a secret vote. Now, if it looks like a duck, sounds like a duck, it's a duck, and it's not a smell. And that's, since 1976 I've been here, I've never heard of this in this town. It's awful, what's going on. There's several questions to address. Where do the residents go to get an answer on those issues? I understand why you don't want to answer them, that says 10,000 words to me on that, why you don't, because you don't want to say something that would hurt the town. I understand that. But where do the residents get their answer on those questions? Okay, number one, when is the last time there was a secret vote on anything? Just out of memory, can anyone remember one?
George Pamela, my Pamela home pack.
I don't.
Years ago.
Okay, guys, so, this, conflict of interest, how the thing got on the warrant in the first place, without the other members, and the secret ballot. Am I going nuts? Am I wrong? Do you see anything wrong with that? Now, the selectmen should be addressing that. There should be answers to that. That's all I have to say.
Just a question, Mrs. Smith, and maybe our town council can explain it. Is it certain number of voters that have to stand up and ask for a secret?
Yeah, 25.
25 people have to ask before there'll be a secret ballot? So 25 people have to request it before there's a secret ballot?
That's my understanding. My point is, though, why, on this issue, all of a sudden? We can't remember when there was one, and we have other issues about it as it is, that are distasteful, and now we're going to allow, we're going to...
There'd have to be 25 people that have to stand up and say they want it before it would happen, so...
I'm sure there'll be 25 people.
Who are the 25 people?
I'm sure there will be.
Madam Chair, if I could, if we could just have people talk one at a time, and I have to call you, Madam Chair.
Well, and also, please, stop repeating yourselves, because if you're not going to say something new...
I'm saying something right now.
Then I'm not going to let you talk.
I'm going to say something new right now. The way it was explained to me is, one person at the town meeting gets up and makes the motion that we use a secret, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion, use a secret ballot, and then 25 other people have to stand behind that person and say, I second the motion. That's how I understood it to be explained to me.
Yeah.
That's all.
Then do we get to vote after a second, the whole, the whole town meeting? Do they get to vote whether it's a secret ballot or not? Do 25 people make the...
I think they do, definitely.
Do we get to vote?
Yeah.
And you can vote it down?
Yep.
How do you make sure everyone's, there's a registered voter?
I'm sorry, but please...
I guess my question was answered. Do you have to check in on the hallway to know you're a registered voter?
Before you can get into the hall, you have to be a registered voter.
Do they really check your name off, though?
She needs her name.
Oh, your name, yeah.
Hi, Joseph X., Hall Street. If I get this process right, I mean, this, this is going to come up at the town meeting, number 24. And at that point, after they explain it, they will be said whether the select, board of selectmen endorse it or not? No? Okay, all right.
We're private citizens, just like all of you at town meetings. We have, all we do is set the town meeting warrant. We do not run in any way, shape...
At the town meetings I've been to, they usually say, and blah, 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 we endorse this. Does it need its pass? This means that we that run the town hope that you will pass it.
There's articles on the town meeting warrant that are recommended. Those recommendations are typically financial-based and done by the finance committee, not this board.
All right. But this will not get an endorsement from any board or committee?
I only can speak for myself, sir, I can't speak for other people.
No, I'm, I'm asking as the board, you know, when you, when you, I mean, you're obviously going to allow it to go to the town meeting.
Yes.
It's going to be there.
Yes.
So, but when they announce it, there's nobody that says, okay, all right, thank you.
Greg Essendorian, 28 Ann Street. Just to follow up to that question, but as an individual voter, you have the right during the discussion, if you choose, to agree or disagree, correct?
Yes.
John Texera, First Street, and planning board member. There will be one endorsement. The process after the public hearing is that the planning board takes a vote as to whether or not to recommend it to the town meeting or not. In this particular case, that article, excuse me, at the town meeting for that article, the vote was three in favor and two against. Myself and Mr. Gallagher voting against the, the article, Mr. Andrade, as you would expect, four, as well as Mr. Fallon and Mr....
Driscoll.
Thank you. I just sat with a few minutes ago, Mr. Driscoll. So there is, there is an endorsement that will happen. They don't endorse it, but they get to vote one way or the other, just like the rest of us do. And just one other side comment, someone mentioned about the surveyors out there today. I got a text a little while ago, the bulldozer is at the top of the hill as well.
Really? Jeez, that's crazy.
Also, in here, it says the article is submitted by the planning board. Now, we know, there was a pamphlet that was at the town hall, and we had questions about it, and it looked like it was on there, supported by the selectmen, correct? Has that been removed, or have we investigated that, or?
It's been removed.
We talked about it though...
They were removed, sir.
They, they were removed. Well, on the website, it says that this is submitted by the selectmen. My wife looked at the website, and it doesn't say the planning board.
It, it should say whatever's in there, I don't...
It says it is submitted by the selectmen.
Which should be a copy of the...
The town's website, sir, or the, or another website?
The town's website.
No?
No idea.
No, the, the town's website reflects the annual town meetings warrant as exactly as it's written in the pamphlets that you are looking at right now.
Well, she just, she looked at the website, because we were looking...
Well, I haven't looked at it tonight.
Well, didn't look at it tonight, but...
I'm going to see if I can pull it up if you...
The other night, she looked at it, and it said the selectmen. That's why we're wondering if it had something to do with that pamphlet. Or, you know, we're not really familiar with the website or anything like that.
I never changed it.
Not saying that, but...
The warrant is the same.
It is, yeah.
Sorry, I don't have good service.
That's quite all right, if you can...
I'm trying, just give me a minute.
There was other Facebook sites, like Rainham Residents, that they...
Is it on Facebook, or is it on the Rainham site?
I saw Rainham, um, town website.
But also on Facebook, on the Rainham Residents page, they had...
Well, that would have nothing to do with the town.
And it said that you approved it, that all selectmen approved it.
Yeah, but that's not... That doesn't mean I can... I know.
It hasn't been taken down.
It hasn't been taken down.
It seemed like...
It says submitted by the planning board, sir.
Okay, so, well, maybe I look at it prematurely.
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now. Annual town meeting warrant on the town's website. You can take a look if you want to come over here.
No, I'm just saying, we were looking at it the other night, it said the selectmen. But maybe something got you...
The bottom says selectmen because that's what the warrant looks like, but the article says submitted by the planning board.
Oh, so maybe we just confused the issue.
Yeah, because our names are at the bottom of every warrant, which is required by state law, so...
All right, so maybe, well, maybe that's, maybe that's what the issue was. We're not really that familiar with this stuff. You know, I'm too busy doing other things. But I do urge this board to please throw the article out.
John Texera again, 22 First Street. I said I wasn't going to talk about the article here tonight, and the only reason I got up the other times was to clarify some misinformation. But I guess I want to say this. We beat a dead horse here tonight. We've had many meetings where we've been beating this thing to death, okay? I guess what I ask of the board is, if you've driven around town anywhere, as far as Church Street on the far end before the Lakeville Line, Hill Street in your neighborhood, Joe, all the way up to Hall Street and Hills and, where do you live, Greg? Ann Street, and so, all the way to that side of town. Those signs represent people who are against this. It's not just the First Street or Chickering Road issue. Those are people who object to this. And had funds not been limited, there would have been 150 signs out there, not just 53 signs. I personally put 53 signs up in this town, myself and Mrs. Nickerson. All I ask is, you know, we can talk here all night about how we don't like it and so forth. All I ask is, you look at it. It's not just a local thing for our neighborhoods. And by the way, everybody keeps talking about how it affects the First Street and Chickering Road neighborhoods. No, it affects the King Philip Streets, the Britton Street, I'm sorry, thank you, the circle there behind, off King Philip Street. It's all those neighborhoods. There were thousands of homes in that area, thousands. And I've made the speech before about when you compare it to Route 44, Lorraine? When you compare it to Route 44, on the southern side of Route 44, from Orchard Street West, behind those businesses is the Taunton River and Route 24. There are no homes there that have to deal with the noise and the lights and the 24-hour speakers at McDonald's. They don't have to deal with it because they're not there. On the other side, on the northern side, behind those buildings, the shores and the stop and shops, are the back of those buildings. Now, I grant you, there are homes there on that, and I always forget if it's south street, east or west. I forget if it's east or west, south, or whatever. But, yeah, there were homes there. I counted them. I think there were 15 homes that are along there. My... Are you done? Can I finish?
Please.
No, I don't have to name the streets. They've lived here their whole lives. They know how many streets there are abutting Route 138. All I ask is, consider that when you make your vote. You're all entitled to one vote, just like we are. Consider that, what the effect it has on a major, major portion of the residential areas in this town. Consider that. Consider what you've heard here tonight and what you see all over town. We plan to have a hell of a group there that night, and hopefully we'll defeat it as we have in the past. But I got to tell you, win or lose, we're not done with this. We're not going to see this happen. Win or lose, we are not done with this whole issue. I guarantee you that. Thank you for your time. Town Council, thank you for clearing up the issue of whether or not it was an unauthorized meeting or not. We appreciate that. Not sure that I totally agree with how we fixed it all up, but you're the town council, I'm not, okay? Have a good night. Has anyone else got anything they want to say? Go ahead, Sylvia.
One more time, Sylvia Cross, Chickering Road. I just want to say, I'm so proud of my neighbors. I was appointed the person to go out and collect money to help for the signs, and we managed to put together a nice hunk of money so that we could pay for those signs. And we all love each other, we support each other, and we just do not want to have to keep fighting. We're peace-loving people, living in a nice little neighborhood. I happen to be the first house built on Chickering Road, and I've been there 52 years. And I lived on my little Chickering Road and back of First Street all by myself, our house, all by itself for four years. So I've seen this neighborhood grow, and I've seen families come and go, but the new families that come in are just as wonderful as the ones that leave for whatever reason. And I just want to say thank you for everyone who really loves this town and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that just about exhausted everybody. You know, this is the way it's supposed to work. You have a comment, you have a complaint, you have whatever it is, you bring it forth, and we're all ears. We will listen, but we're only one person, one person, one person. We have our votes just as each and every one of you do. It's on the warrant. It cannot be taken off. As you say, you've got a lot of people going to town meeting. Vote your conscience. Thank you very much for coming. I really appreciate all of your input. And town council, would you like to say something else?
Everyone is through with input?
I believe we're through.
And I would ask, Madam Chairman, if you could make a motion to go into executive session to discuss litigation that's clearly imminently threatened or otherwise demonstrably likely?
Motion to go into exec adjournment, no business thereafter.
Okay. I'm sorry.
State the reason.
Pending potential litigation.
Potential litigation?
Yeah. Actually, to use the exact language from the statute, it's litigation that is clearly imminently threatened or otherwise demonstrably likely, and also indicating we're going to reconvene in open session at the end of the executive session.
Oh, okay. So we're reconvening? We're going to reconvening tonight? We can adjourn and just...
When you come out of executive session, reconvene, then you can adjourn.
Okay. So we would be reconvening just to adjourn?
That's it.
No action to take?
No action to. Yep.
A little favor?
Aye.
Elizabeth.